May 28th, 8:30 AM at Selecting View. Today's gonna be really a working session based on what was, you know, some of the zoning things that we've done in the past. We're gonna talk about, you know, better ways to do things. So with that, I want to actually ask Mr. Lee Henning to give us an update on what he was talking about earlier.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
Welcome to your first meeting, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Mr. Coleman, welcome to the board.
Welcome.
I submitted a number of items that I thought were important to us to begin to talk about. And I'll start with, obviously, we need to digest a little bit about what occurred at Town Meeting and the implications of that, and the message sent by the voters. Secondly, I think we need to take a serious look at some of the organizational structure we have around our zoning process and revisit this, input from all of the appropriate boards to be sure that we've got this thing structured correctly. Having Ray on board now, I think, gives us an opportunity to make some changes. And the first one I want to talk about is the Zoning By Law Study Committee. We're certainly appreciative of all of the people that volunteer their time and effort to this, but I think that the committee, the way it's concretely, I don't want to say configured perhaps is the wrong word, because the configuration representation is correct. We have two fundamental issues. One is, to work effectively, we need a real strong commitment for the participants on that board to attend the meetings. We had members of these boards that, due to their own personal conflicts, just are unable to attend. We've not had criteria around who should be on that board. Now, we don't control if it's appointed by the on-board, so they can pick whoever they choose. I'd like us to talk about it considering forward default, how many of you have some changes to that. And I have no issue whatsoever with the makeup of it, other than I would recommend the following changes. One, I would recommend that the committee be permitted to be chaired by the Town Plan. Two, I would like to see the makeup the same as it is currently, in terms of the board participation, but I would like the members that are to participate to be appointed by the Board of Selectment as opposed to being selected by the committees. The reason for that is that sometimes these appointments become sort of default appointments, you know? Who really is willing to step up there? And only attendance is very lax. Quite honestly, the Planning Board is one that's been not actively engaged in that committee. The appointee from that board has attended very few meetings. Third, I think we need to be criteria established around who, in fact, can participate. And by that, I mean, I think, the number-one criteria is that any participant on that committee, we must be assured that there are absolutely no financial interests, either direct or indirect, in any given sense. Questions that are before that committee, they should be published, to completely eliminate any considerations or concerns around anybody having on doing those. Zoning is critically important to this town. Boring for participants, hard to understand, but critically important. And I think we really need to pay more careful attention to how we review this. We have-
Just to clarify, so just in terms of zoning by law study committee membership, not participation, because it isn't open for, correct?
Oh, no, 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 this is membership.
So I just wanted to clarify. I know that's what your intent was.
Yes, yeah. All meetings are open and public, that's not my point. But they're not public hearings. There's a difference, as we all know. And audience, you know, anyone is welcome to attend and listen and what have you, but they're not public hearings. It shouldn't be, people should not be sitting there giving their thoughts and inputs unless requested so by the Chair. And it's fully appropriate, but it's not a public hearing. And some of our zoning by law study committees have had that type of participation, and that needs to stop. And we need to do this right, and we need to have some rules and guidelines on how to accomplish this, because it's clear that we've got some issues around zoning. And we've gotta try and fix this, and we have some professional help to help us do that, because we're all in. I don't mean this to be critical to anyone that has participated in the process, well, we're all amateurs, self-included. And this is complicated stuff, and we need to get it better than we've done today. So, we can only make these changes by bringing it forward to the meeting in November. Short term, we have another issue, and the biggest issue is Southwood. And we have potentially some significant issues around zoning changes that will be associated with the Southwood project, and he can't go forward without changes. And we need to get a group together that can work on this quickly, that is in a position to meet most likely during the day, I suspect quite regularly, because it's gonna kick off here. We have June, July, and August, for all intents and purposes, because the warrant will open and close end of September?
Yeah.
Mid-September?
Probably, I would like to have our call meeting earlier than the meeting on the day.
It opens in July. The warrant opens in July.
Opens, but it closes mid-September?
Yeah.
Right. So basically, we've got three months, and they're gonna fly by, and it's summer, and it's hard to get people together in summer. So we've gotta find a group of folks that can participate in this process pretty quick. And I don't think the Zoning By Law Study Committee is in a position to do that, as it is currently configured. We can't change that committee, but we can establish, well, this board has the privilege of establishing a working group-
Like we did with Jay and Paul.
Like we did with Jay and Paul's, a working group, at our pleasure, to work on this. And I recommend that we do that, and that we pick some folks that we think can help us think through some of these issues that have been brought forward to us regarding this Southwood project, because we really would have to deal with this. I mean, it's, you know, and I don't want to be sitting in Town Meeting again trying to interpret, you know, what this bylaw is, or what it doesn't do, or what are the implications of that. We need to have that well thought through and well understood long before we get that going. So those are two immediate thoughts I have concerning the bylaw study committee. And, as I say, I don't mean this to reflect on any individuals, but I think that we have seen, we've gotta reflect on track record. The track record is not working. It is not working, and we need to fix it.
So, you know, I know that you've met with us out with folks.
Several times.
Appreciate you getting some perspective on that. So, just so I understand, is, are we at a point where they really can't do anything that's economically feasible until we change, you know, zoning? Or is it a situation where they could do something, but it's really not what would be in the best interest of the town until we change the zoning to give them an alternative strategy?
Good question. I don't wanna relate, Jack and I had a one-on-one meeting with him a couple months ago, Jack? After he signed the deal with the Archdiocese, and, or whoever, I guess it's the Archbishop of the Archdiocese. And he outlined a two-year, Jack, you jump in if I miss anything, he outlined a two-year process that he has to make this happen, and there are benchmarks along the way. The first benchmark, and he can drop out of the deal if each of these benchmarks is not completed. The first benchmark is zoning, and I believe February was the magic date that he had.
Sounds good.
Yeah, I think he had-
Ray and I know what you're doing.
Did I get it right, Ray?
Yeah.
I think he has to complete whatever zoning changes he needs, and he believes he needs zoning change. Right now, it's zoned for 55 of them, and he doesn't think that's gonna work in its entirety. I know you've had some conversations with him one-on-one as well, and you wanna, you sense there's a willingness to be flexible on this, or, because I know what his original proposal was.
Sure, there's a lot of flexibility. His phrase was to be more like water, as we're going through this process, trying to find what the right mix is for commercial, residential, and try to put what we're currently looking for. So the over-55, in his words, was too constrained. There's a limited market, and he's finding that that over-55 market is starting to become not as robust as it used to be. So he's trying to move into more of a family idea, and the other part of his development idea was that he wanted to have something that he could sort of transition from families to elderly to assisted living, and so that was just his concept. We came to the mix when we met with him, the idea of commercial at the front of the property, as we talked about making the commercial a phased-in kind of thing. So if you're doing residential, you're basing it on commercial at the same time. You know, one of the thoughts we had was that area was to be right through the supermarket.
And didn't you talk about commercial amenity, though, again? Remember, like, having a beauty salon, like, the service to need, not just the people there.
Yeah, you just talked about some-
Yeah. Beauty, you know, different things that people would need in a complex, right?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's really, that's really what we were talking about, is, you know, supermarket kinda serves as the anchor, the smaller mall, and then, you know, that would also serve as an anchor for Route 1A. I mean, you pick up Route 1A from the running line, and give maybe, you know, some things that we think that are anchor-type stores that will make that area flourish. And this, I think this is key for the town, if we can find the right mix, but we have to be willing to work with that, and I think that's what Jim Strang did was to get us to that point there.
And then, we need to learn from the lessons that we've already had. And when we talk about commercial, we've had some projects already where they have been both commercial and residential, and we're still waiting for the commercial. So we need to be very careful about how we put this together, so that we've got some benchmarks on our side of the coin, because we don't want to see this, if in fact, this is hypothetically, we have a plan that involves extensive amounts of commercial as well as residential, and we see the residential building, for whatever reason, we never see the commercial. We need to, and I don't know the answer, I just know the question. We need to figure out how to put some benchmarks in there, give both parties assurances that they've done the right way. And there's no indication that he isn't willing to, you know, I mean, who knows? We've never been business with him that, but to date, he's certainly saying the right things.
But he's still at the work of the market, I assume that's what the other developer might say. Well, there's no commercial opportunities, or he doesn't see the demand, he doesn't want to go ahead with his residential.
But he's gonna avoid our zoning, or the KMLD, or the special permit, or whatever, and avoid the commercial, still hurts us in the end of the day.
Right.
Correct. So there's an awful lot to talk about with this gentleman, and it's gonna take more than four or five casual conversations, because these are significant changes. We have issues around water, you know, I assume he's gonna put in his treatment plant, I mean, you know, but we don't have any water down there, I mean, maybe he can do a deal with Walpole, or who knows? The well's not serviceable, it used to be with the prison, so that's off the table. There are a lot of substantial issues that we have to work through for this to happen, and we've got three months to do it, if we're gonna bring it forward, because he's got, if his benchmark, I assume, it is what it is, if February is the date, that predates our spring meeting, obviously, so we've got November to bring forward whatever recommendations we feel are good for us and good for him to make this work, if in fact, we choose to do that. You know, we may at the end of the day say, and he's said this as well in our meeting, you know, if this isn't something you guys want, or we can't find that middle row that works for both sides, then he's gonna pack up his bags and go home.
So he purchased that land out, correct?
Well, he's got a two-year timeframe in which to pass the month.
Okay, so hence the two-year.
And he's got benchmarks along the way that he can drop out in the first of zone. And that's why we've got to get a group of people together quickly, that have no alignments with the project, you know, that have some knowledge, obvious qualifications, they have some basic knowledge of zoning, Bob, you certainly gotta be involved, you certainly have to be involved, I mean, we've gotta get a group of people together that can commit the time to sitting down with this gentleman and working on this.
On top of that, you know, the other Warren Street property, too, is going on, too, so potentially 150 residential units is the back envelope proposal.
And it's been very difficult to get the zoning by law study committee together, and in fact, you know, they had meetings without warrants, so, you know, we've got to get a group of people that can make a commitment to work, and we can't change this committee until Town allows us to do so. And, but we can put a working group together. So that's just my two cents on it. And I don't object to people that are on the zoning by law study committee participating in that work, that's not my point. It's just that if we rely on that group, history tells me it's not gonna do the job for something this complicated and within a very defined timeframe. This is a big project. This is the biggest project that we've fixed, and we cannot afford to make mistakes on this, at least no- So, and there's a bunch of other things that sort of tie into this, just to kind of put them on the table, the events at Town Meeting, clear message from the voters, is what it is. But we did have one event happen from that vote that I don't think any of us anticipated, and that we did eliminate residential-only considerations outside the D1 district. We need to talk about that, good, bad, or indifferent, we do need to talk about it. It was interesting to me that we went through that entire conversation with 150, 160, I don't know, maybe that night was the 100, I forgot.
The second night or the first night?
Second night. But not a single person, not one person, what do you mean, brought to the attention of that voting body what that amendment did. We all thought it was just associated with density. I voted accordingly, because I don't agree with that level of density, but that said, that's just my vote. I did not realize I was eliminating residential until I met with you the next morning, and you, and several other people, and we spent three or four hours, maybe a couple hours anyway for sure, going through the zoning, and, as you correctly pointed out, Joe, and you re-read 16 times, yeah, you did. So we need to take a look at that, and we need to get input as to whether or not that's what's going on. Which brings me to another topic, which is the master plan. I have not read the master plan in quite a while, and I know you've read it now, and I read that, and it needs a lot of work.
It's perfect.
It's, to me, it's an inventory, as opposed to a vision. And our bylaws should reflect a vision, and when you read that master plan, it's just, and obviously, this isn't what it says, you know, we've got 12 trucks, we've got 16, it's an inventory of our land, our, what we can do with the land, there's no vision. There is no vision in that document, and at least that I read. Your two cents?
My two cents is, I think it handily deals with the idea of what we have, but it doesn't look towards the future as well as, like, my professional opinion is, it should be, it should be looking towards what we would like to see off off to be in the future, in the next 10 years, maybe even 20 years. And what are the things that we need to do to get to those points, get to those places? We had a great vision, I think, with the Senate District, and you implemented some of those things here, but to look at the whole package, look at the entire town, break it down into economic development plan, use, transportation, and on and on, you break it down into these different components that can have an impact on what actually happens here, you know, I sort of pieced together, pieced together with some conversations with everybody about the Senate District, and people have brought up this provision of water, which is here, but we've got some limitations on water. On the other side of that, the water equation is the sewage issue, what do you do with that? And I know there's been talk in Town about a packaged sewage system, but that's the type of stuff where your comprehensive plan should, you talk about what you'd like to see, where you'd like to see that, what areas should be serviced by that type of system, and then what steps you might need to take in order to get there, like, get there, how you get there.
And I would add to that, that it needs some, be some practical components to that that reflect what the community wants us to be as well. And, you know, we, I think we all, we understand the economics of it, that if you're going to have any meaningful commercial development, you need to have some fundamental traffic in order to get the management, although I think there are exceptions to that, I mean, good restaurants, people come from anywhere, we're good restaurants.
That's true.
But that said, somehow, and this is the hardest part, because there's a lot, there's indifference during the process, and there are views after the process, somehow, we gotta find a way to have community input that meaningfully tells us, as opposed to just a few suggesting that this is the right vision.
Absolutely.
We need to get many suggesting provisions, because, you know, I mean, there are a lot of people that don't want the Town Center developed to any great extent.
Right.
Are they right or wrong? I don't know. You know, I'd like to see more commercial down there, I'd like to see more residential in the area, but I'm one person, you know, there's 11,000, 6,000 voters, they, I mean, maybe at some point, we need to have a referendum sometime, where we get people to come to the polls, and say, what do you think? You know, is this the right vision, or do you want another vision? Because it's not our town, it's theirs, and we've gotta figure that out.
I'm not gonna interrupt you, but just to add to what your thought is, there can be design sheriffs, if you had on a Saturday, you could have it in the library, and have people come in, and you talk about vision, and what the vision is, the town, what they look to see, and you can kind of pull that from the folks that do attend, so you get some sort of, you know, sort of responses for what you're looking to do. Southwood may be a good place to start with this, I know that George Holon is talking about doing a design sheriff, and try to just bring people in on a Saturday, and see if they would be willing to just give their thoughts, because that's, that's what he's looking for, he's looking for thoughts and ideas, so give it a start, and then maybe at a later date, maybe the company's planning guys, and that's about, I think. Yeah, just, I wasn't engaged in the process back in 2006, which led to the master plan in 2007, but, you know, they did have participation from the different, I guess they were the different precincts within the town, and-
Yeah, the effort was-
Some business participation as well, but perhaps, you know, an alternate strategy is you propose, you know, it'd be necessary really to get a groundswell of participation in the library, in the historic street, so, you know, included in the master plan is reference to the process that the group had gone through at that point in time, to develop that, knowing some of our huge thought.
Yeah, I mean, people who have a vested interest in the outcome, whether it be emotional or financial, doesn't matter, I mean, and they have a right to have that interest. They're always going to participate. Yeah, and the issue is how do you get-
How do you tell the people that?
Yeah, how do you get outside of that group to truly reflect how people feel about the community? I mean, it's a great town, and with a lot of, you know, and we're in a very unique situation where most towns don't have the ability to shape themselves, we do, and it needs to be what the community wants, you know? And we'll never get there, I mean, we'll never get 6,000 of people to tell us what they feel, and you'll never get agreement. You can't get agreement from 10 people, but we've gotta make the effort.
We can miss that more importantly, so you can make, you know, now, Ray, did you have any luck, I mean, the idea of, you know, another thing, you know, because people, like you said, are just busy, it's hard to get, you know, the recreation survey, too, you know, to-
It's hard.
It's hard to get, you know, we could think of, you know, we send up a tax bill, we have, like, instead of doing a referendum idea, put something, you know, they can fill out a couple of questions, and give them other some ideas, put in the text, so, yeah, because they always mail them, and not even a mailman, some people bring them, and either way, if it's just a couple-page thing, a charrette in a sense of writing, I know I'm better visual, I'll see what Ray has to say, or what you want to show for the downtown or Southwood or Long Street, but maybe that, that's a start, like, that comes in court, they just do that, at least start building that up.
I mean, we're creatures of-
You know, we get some different, you know, it's honest, you get some different, you know, they can do what's, they can just drop off in a separate area if they want it, not put the tax on the road, and stuff like that.
There's a number of ways to be serving, you can chat with people, even the Facebook page, it could really-
You take a lot of, I take a lot of heat, but it's not a bad, I mean, it can fix skin, it's not, yeah.
I won't be able to respond, I'm not a chef.
Well, no response, I mean, again, it was-
I'll get my kids.
Some of the stuff we're going to have off now, at least, you know, you're reaching out to different segments of the population, and it goes on there, but at least certain people are, and they're able to give you some feedback, Facebook is another way, you can do physical surveys, you send out the tax bills, but you get the questions out there, and you're gonna get some feedback.
Right.
I've had experience with Town Brands and Plans, doing physical surveys, and the response was pretty good, probably about under 10%, which is still statistically valid, but it was still, it was still a decent amount, and you'd be surprised when you get that many surveys back, you realize, well, this is only 10%.
10% of facts.
Yeah.
You get people, but, yeah.
I mean, it's a, it's a different type of project, but one of the things I saw on Cable Access a couple months ago was where I actually did a field trip, if you will, at the state hospital facility, where, you know, your state funding is involved and such, so it's, it's different, but for something like Southwood, maybe doing something on a Saturday at the site where people can park, they can see, you know, point, and talk about where some of the concepts are in terms, you know, where some of the, you know, waste issues, hazardous waste issues are, and gonna be, and be, you know.
Yeah, that's a great idea, actually, because people that are curious about Southwood want to see anybody.
I'd give it any most part of nothing.
They got pretty good turnout in that field, right?
A lot of new people walking around. That's a good issue, they're global, and, you know.
That's good. I think we should, you know. Do you think, I put you at the bottom line of the master plans, coming up on the 10-year cycle, anyway, it's a good time to do it, we should just put it together.
It's not a short project for us to take.
It's probably a year. Yeah, to your point, I think, I think implicit in the document talks about 15 years, I could be wrong, but I feel like it's, but it needs, yeah, there's a lot of chicken on me.
I think 15 years is a long cycle.
Well, just the makeup of the town in terms of the rest of it. Changes, we got different needs, you know, as people move, other people move in. I think with a 15-year cycle, if you're looking out at 15 years, but you're adjusting every five, or-
Instead, you go back every two.
So you've always got that 15-year lookout, and then you adjust as you move forward, you can, you can focus in on the things you need to focus on, but it takes that kind of cycle when you get people back.
Well, if we don't take the initiative to try and work on these things, so, I mean, everybody's life is busy.
I was gonna say, we're asking for a lot of committee to go master plan, Southwood, you know, like, getting qualified, getting willing to-
We can't get people to participate in this.
I was gonna say, that's my whole, that's the whole issue, is we don't have enough people willing to participate as it is now.
But you know, if we had, if we could get a good group of folks, like, around some of these issues, we could do this stuff. I mean, you know, I think we've got too many of these, we're stretched too thin in terms of how we use them. We don't need 87, ready, so I am suggesting a working group, but I'm suggesting a working group because I think we need to change the formal group that's in place to make, in short term, because of the issues before us. And Southwood's here, but we can't hide from it, we can't deny it, you know, we've gotta be active participants in this process, but Southwood, not an option. So maybe they've got a better idea on how we get a good group of folks, I mean, it doesn't happen, there's no private ownership here, we just, we gotta be sure we get a good group of folks that are independent in their views on this project, and have some basis of knowledge that can help us work through these things, because it's, it's here, and we've got three months to deal with it, so we can't wait till August, and we meet every two weeks, you know, kind of thing, we can't wait till August to figure this out. So, there's another idea, please, guys, throw it out.
So, you know, in terms of giving people an opportunity, if they so choose to step up and express interest, whether or not, you know, there's a process that we'll go through in terms of, you know, the group of people that will come forward, nobody may come forward, but is that part of the plan, is to invite people to express interest and participation, and then we interview, and perhaps, you know, screen those candidates and interview them, what have you?
I think it's, you could do it that way, Jack, I guess I come with a bias on this one, but it's just a bias, I could be dead wrong, I think, I think we know the qualifica- I think we know, not necessarily who, but the type of qualifications we want to participate in this process, you know, and when you open the door, sometimes you don't necessarily get the right fit, and, you know, the volunteers, you really can't say, well, thank you, but no, it's tough. I would, my bias is, is that I would think we could collectively, and outside of this group, other people as well, we could come up with a list of 10 or 15 people that we think could meaningfully contribute to this process, and then we pick, you know, and get input from other boards, there should be representation from all of the boards, you know, or the ladies' boards, and, you know, be sure, one, will they make the commitment to meet weekly or every other week, or whatever it might end up being, it's gonna be a little heavy lifting, you know, and a lot of people aren't retired, you know, don't have the opportunity to do that, so that should be, you know, one, can they show up, number one criteria. Number two, they have no interest in the project, direct or indirect. Number three, they have some basis of knowledge in zoning, and the community, and the vision, and all of that, and, you know, that kind of thing. I don't think it's brain surgeon work, but I think I'd rather come up with a list and then select than have sort of this broad-reaching approach where you may have folks that really don't need that criteria.
But I think-
Just my thoughts.
Except that, you know, you know, if you- Except, you know, you know, if you can identify those ten to fifteen people, you do, you do run the risk of missing someone that we haven't identified, or collectively we've, everyone, but no, but he or she is eminently qualified, you know, fits all these things, we talked about time commitment, no interest, a visionary experience, and don't, again, I assume they'd step forward, or you probably made themselves know, we do run that, small, make a smaller...
We got a meeting on Monday, I guess, is Monday, or Monday?
Monday, yes.
I mean, we could put it out there, there's no harm in that, I guess, I mean, you know, just, they could get ahold of Marion or Jack, if they have interest in participating in a working group, and, you know, if we got thirty people, obviously, we can't have thirty people, it's too much a group.
It'd be nice to have a lot, it'd be nice to have...
You know, I mean, some people, we're going to have to thank them for volunteering, but, you know, we've got all we can use, so to speak, so nothing wrong with that, but I do think we need to have others, too.
Well, one of the ways to approach it might be, I mean, the fact that you've got several things related to planning, zoning, what have you, is to make up that list of the various groups, or committees, whatever, you know, we have ahead of us here, and invite folks to express interest, because we may have enough need here, and there, you know, we can certainly use, you know, several people.
You have multiple projects going on.
You know what I'm saying, so, in other words, if you approach it in a way that's not specific to a particular group, but you just let it know that we have a number of different needs, you know, where the town is going to be placing, and we need people to participate, then we can perhaps go through and speak with those folks, and perhaps there is a need, you know, once we really get into this, because I'm not sure, you know, with the demands of Southwood, whether those same people will really be able to participate in the master plan, or grant you, or, you know, by law, state committee, or other things that I think we're looking at going forward.
I agree, and, and, I don't mean to exclude business owners, or, you know, that's not my, they have to be part of the process, but you can't have, you can't give a vote, so to speak, with those considerations, but clearly, they have to be part of the process. When we come up with, with plans or zoning or what have you, that's financially, that work, which we have done, what's the point?
Yeah, that, and that's the challenge.
So there has to be that balance between what's financially viable for folks to, to want to fulfill this, whatever this vision is, versus what's in the best interest of the town. So they have to participate in the process, but the vote belongs to the community. That's, so I'm not excluding that component I didn't mention, I think they have to be part of the process. And it's no different than what George is going to participate, he's the business owner, he's the guy that's going to, he's got the investors, he's bringing in the capital, he has a financial consideration in how this all goes, he's, he clearly is going to give his input, and what he wants, and so on, and we have to balance that, figure out whether or not it's good for us, and hopefully, I suspect it'll be somewhere in the middle, usually is. But we, we, we just, I'm bringing it up right now, because we don't have time, and we are, we're going to be under a very short timeframe. I mean, it'll take us several weeks to get this group together, summer's terrible, it's hard to get people, you know, in the summertime, and we've only got the summertime, so, there we sit.
My other comment about trying to find people is just, we've done, we've advertised in the paper, we've published things on, you know, for that, we've written an annual report. The general people that are going to read those types of things and then come forward, you know, I think they'll come forward, granted, we might grab one or two if we do that, but, you know, I think that would put an influence on, particularly you guys going out and trying to find people, you know, actively recruiting people to do some of the stuff that does, you know, I think, we don't have enough, you know, like, Ray, the Boomerang, any more? That would be a great place to have on the front of the paper, you know, come volunteer. We don't get, a lot of people don't get this on part at all, and that's mostly out of all this, and, you know, across the road, and trying to, you know, for needs helped in there, it's going to be... What about, that's an issue, sort of about that nine one, reverse nine one one, you've done for water supply, I don't know, given if we really feel this is, you know, such an important thing for the town, which that is, I know people will be pissed, right, about there, like, they get too many, and it'll be forgotten instantly later, but you do reach, for one, one instant in time, you do reach all vote, or all residents, right? Yeah, I, I think powerful tool, we should use it, you know, when we need to, and I think when, if we were going to do one of those... Like sessions? Sessions, and invite people in to talk about the master plan, that would be a perfect time to use that, you know, a couple of days ahead of time. So I think we're all on the same page, I think, you know, in terms of going out proactively, you know, speaking with people, recruiting, if you will, but by the same token, at least doing what we can to let people know that we're interested in their input, participation, because, you know, unfortunately, you know, I think my sense is that these are going to be fairly divisive projects, some of these projects, you know, it's that balance between, you know, quality of life in terms of what we have versus the property rights of the individuals, and how to balance this, and, you say, come up with something that meets the, you know, the economic requirements, the commercial requirements, if you will, but still something that the town can support.
I mean, it's, it's a, Southwood's a perfect place for development, I mean, it's, but it comes with its issues, and, and, you know, I know he's, I've already seen his study on the schools, you know, and the decreasing, all of, all valid numbers, you can't make them up, they're, they're real, you're not making them up, you know, our enrollment is down, I think it's like nine fifty-six, something to sixty-five, and it's been as high as eleven hundred.
That's why I said...
Yeah, so, you know, it, all of those things are true, but you, you, it's not that simple, you, you base your economics on, on that picture, or that day, and that event, and so, you know, our budgets reflect today's reality, not yesterday's reality, and so, if, if we go from today's reality to yesterday's reality, you know, it does have an impact. I mean, you can't deny that, but just to say your enrollment's down, so you've got room, it's not that simple. It's valid, but not that simple, it's not a linear equation, and, and so, you've got to have some folks that understand all that and work it through, because two hundred and fifty units is what we originally talked about, maybe, you know, who knows where it will all go, depending on what, and how, and where, you know, if it's part fifty-five and up, that has an impact, all of those things impact it, so you've got to have that picture to take a fairly accurate look at what it really means to your infrastructure. I mean, we're not going to have two hundred families move in with all twelve-year-olds, you know, so, it, it, I think it does have an impact, and we need to understand that and make sure it's, that we can deal with. We're not building out a school.
So in terms of, you know, actions, and perhaps I'm jumping the gun, criteria that you were describing.
Well, Southwood's in a meeting, I mean...
Yeah, but at least we get it started.
That one's a crisis, a crisis.
What I wouldn't want to see is where you get down the road, and then folks say, gee, I would like to have, you know, the, you know, the sooner we get, get it out there, the more interesting, and what I don't know, that means they have a form of, you know, role in the process, or they're just, you know, there's, there's levels of participation, perhaps, in the process.
Absolutely, nothing wrong with that at all.
So, Jeff, what you're saying is, we need to find out what those big questions are in the town, so, Southwood, the town center, that's it, and we want to add, what are the big questions? What do we want to have people give us input for, as we see it, and then leave some room for what did we forget? What are the other big questions?
And I would add to that, that there needs to be a short-term priority list, if you will, and a long-term priority list, and, and if we, remember that we've got a meeting coming up here in November, what are the two or three things associated with these types of issues, sort of zoning-related issues, what, what do we need to focus on that we need to bring forward for consideration to town meeting in November?
Well, you could even asterisk the ones that is going to require participation, summer participation, we can't put that in there so that people know, that this would be a go-to the summer, and they say, I don't want to do that. A lot of time, you know, and those would be the ones that fit that, that description. I mean, I think, Jeff, you're right, so you put in that time commitment, you know, it stresses, you know, some of the, it could be week, you know, weekly, bi-weekly, throughout the summer.
Well, I would assume, I would assume bi-weekly, I think that's probably, you know, if they don't need that, I think it's going to require that level, Jack, don't you? I think it's going to require that level of commitment, that you're going to have to meet twice a month for the next three months, so you're committing to six meetings, I think that's six, math is right, you know, there may be more, six to eight meetings to help us work through these issues. Including more in September, when you start involving us, as well as, you know, this advisory board, and things of that nature, so it, it's, it's a commitment, in the toughest time of the year to make a commitment.
Yeah, so we'll talk about that, that, you know, meeting on the second, you know, kind of thing, I think that to stress the time commitment, I think is important, you know, we're going to recruit, but other people, I need to know, I'm going to say, Jeff, can you do that on, on Twitter, Facebook, Facebook, start that? And, you know, in terms of getting even just, you know, ideas around, even if it's just around Southwood, if you want to get through, you know, if we had some questions, Ray, or anyone, if we had some questions, we leave, like, for instance, people come here, you know, come to Town Hall quite frequently, leave something at the Town Hall, or something, it was just a sheet or something that could check off preferences, ID, you know, I don't know what to put on there, but say, because people are always going to Carol's House, they go to the Sestoff, excuse me, the town, to try to pay bills, let's put it like a sheet there, something, you know what I mean? And they can, you know, if that's second, I know it's weird, but I think we'll get them, because, you know, it's, it's a, makes some people come to the Town Hall, it's not just people that are interested, you come here for various reasons, if we had something, you know, we could have them just, you know, should I do, you know, just if they had questions to ask, and, you know, I'm not going to waste their time, it's something quick, you know, maybe help us with some visioning, and stuff like that, I mean, so I think, again, you get from young to old, coming to that hall.
I mean, we, we, we know we need a member of the planning team, you know, so we need to find someone on that board that can make that, that can, you know, this isn't being critical, I mean, people's lives are busy, some people just can't do it, and it's okay, but we need to get somebody that can, and there needs to be conservation, zoning bylaw study, ZBA, and Board of Health, and if we can get one member that can make that commitment to attend these meetings, I mean, that'd go along with it. And if, to be honest, if, if, if we could, I mean, that's, the structure of the ZBA as it now stands.
Right.
So, you know, it isn't that the structure's wrong, it's just that it, the process, I know how it is, it becomes sort of a default, you know, you're some on the board, it's, well, who wants to be represented, who wants, and everybody thinks it's crazy, it's, it's busy, and so, what happens is, you have meetings without people there, and you don't get the participation and input that you need.
Yeah, and some of it is, when you have new people to the board, they're not necessarily comfortable right away, just paying, until they learn their ropes a little bit, you know, with planning and then health, so that's interesting.
It's not meant to be critical, this isn't, it's just that we, we're in a situation that is a little bit unique for us right now, we've never had a project like this come before us, that will definitely be requesting zoning changes, that has some pretty far-reaching impact on the community, but we need to really understand it, so, this to me is a rather unique situation that merits kind of outside box.
Well, you know, one of the things, I'm surprised the word didn't come up today, roundtable, you know, which is a, is a little bit different, but it's similar in terms of the participation, how, how does that compare with, you know, having a working group, and having perhaps, whether it's occasional participation by the board of selectmen as a quorum, or a member of the board, I'm not sure what that looks like, how does, compare those things to work with?
Very good point, I, I think you almost start this with a roundtable, to a certain degree, where it can easily, a roundtable hypothetically would involve everyone from the planning, should come to that, no, everyone from the board of selectmen should come to that, I mean, it, there should be a broad participation, where you get a lot of input, a lot of discussion, and then this working group has to sort of refine what they hear from that larger group of participation, and that is a great place to start.
Maybe that's where, yeah, we need to start.
Yeah, and then from, from that, you know, volume of input, hopefully, you can delineate down into something that, that is reachable, you know, and, and work in a smaller group to look through the details of that.
Well, how about if that roundtable agenda for that meeting included, you know, that essential question in terms of, you know, who, who is going to participate, or what does participation look like, and also, you know, if we had that outline of the different planning, zoning-related stuff, you know, so that at least all those folks are aligned in terms of what we're trying to accomplish as we canvass the community for input, and such, does that make sense, and we put this together in that type of confidential way, so we can bring those folks along with us?
I don't come with a, I'm throwing out sort of a, this is a strong, on how we approach something that's here, there's no pride of others should be, Jeff, if there's a getaway...
Yeah, no, Jim, and it's, that's why, we remember board...
I'm not on crusade to get away with the zoning bylaw study committee either, I, I just want to make it a more functional process that has more clearly defined considerations around the who's and the hows.